Councilmember Jensen.
President.
Mayor Zierden.
Present.
Councilmember Veroni.
Present.
Councilmember Scott absent.
All right, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so I will go ahead and start us off. Is he on yet?
Uh, Joe, can you hear us?
Okay, I will go ahead and start us off. Um, I would like to explain kind of how.
Make sure you can hear. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Go ahead.
Can you hear?
Okay. So I'd first like to explain kind of how we got here today, um, and then I will let Joe discuss the legal aspect of it, and then we will also be discussing the unethical aspect of it, which I have provided you guys some content in the packets today. It was first brought to my attention regarding the forwarding of emails, um, the summer of 2023, so last year. Administrator Chansky at the time had seen that there were email strings coming through in responses that were showing how he had forwarded, and he had brought it to my attention. He was concerned about personnel data, um, and it was also at that time that Councilman Scott was having issues with getting our calendar invites. So we called the IT specialist, um, and actually I provided you the email from our IT person telling Councilman Scott that it was because of the forwarding of emails and that it was illegal to do so, and that he should not do it, and he provided him the resources. He provided him, um, to let him know that it was against our city policy, and he also followed up with a phone call. This was in August of 2023, so over a year ago. Um, Councilman Scott continued to forward all emails, and it was also at that time that Administrator Chansky came to me and said, well, I just don't, I don't feel comfortable with having Councilman Scott on the committees for Personnel and Finance, um, because we knew that information was being, um, sent out to the public, and that was actually the reason that we brought it to the council to potentially get rid of the committees, um, just because we didn't feel like we could trust him with that information. Um, and fast forward, um, to Administrator Chansky's resignation. Um, it was actually because of an email that Councilman Scott had sent that Administrator Chansky had to abruptly resign due to, um, potential leaking of personnel data and other information to the public. And so unfortunately, the last two years, it's been a little challenging for, for me, and I know other members of council have known that some of this forwarding was going on, to not be able to tell the public what was going on. Um, and so I'm, I brought, I had seen, um, an article online about a potential candidate that was interested in our interim, um, position. Those resumes had not been shared with the public yet, and it was actually illegal to do so, and that is when I first contacted Joe to look into this, um, given the fact that, um, I did have to call and apologize to that individual candidate, um, for his information actually being leaked to the public prior to our meeting and selecting those finalists. Um, so I will go ahead and turn it over to Joe to present the legal aspect of the findings.
Morning, everybody. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 All right, thank you. There's a little bit of a time delay here, so I'll, I'll try to make this work. Uh, so the, um, upon hearing about this potential leak of private data, uh, the city IT person was asked to, um, dig into the city account and, uh, basically do a data dump on, uh, on a bunch of emails, uh, going to and from Mr. Scott. And, uh, it was a lot of, a lot of data, a lot of emails, but within those emails, we found, um, several issues here, and, uh, I had provided a, a memo on this, but I'll, I'll walk through it. It's, it's apparent from the, uh, data that's in there that Mr. Scott routinely forwards the vast majority of these emails to his personal email account, and then from there forwards them to a group of approximately seventeen people. Um, I will state that forwarding, uh, emails from your city account to your personal account is not illegal. There's nothing illegal about that at all. Um, and forwarding emails of a public nature to other individuals, whomever they may be, is also not illegal. That's, I would say it's, it's unusual, but it's, it's not actually illegal. Uh, but within the emails that were forwarded were several of them that are problematic. And, um, just kind of going down the list here, there was, um, there was an email concerning health issues of, of certain, um, city staff that was forwarded to the number of members of the public, uh, health status of public, uh, employees as private data, uh, private personnel data under the, um, Data Practices Act. There's another one similarly, um, where there was an email about a particular staff member and an issue with, uh, his family, and the, and email was even ended with the statement, this is not for public dissemination. That email, uh, contained private personnel data as well, and was forwarded to his personal address and forwarded to members of the public. And then getting into this whole issue with replacing the city administrator, um, there ended up being several emails, or at least three of them, I should say, um, kind of arising out of that whole scenario. Uh, one of them, um, there was, uh, an email forwarded, um, email from Mayor Zierden forwarded by Ms. Brunksmeyer concerning candidates, potential candidates, uh, and included a resume from a person deciding the job. Uh, at that point, that person was an applicant for the job at under, uh, thirteen point forty-three of the Data Practices Act. Uh, until a person is chosen to be interviewed, applicant data, applicant's data is private personnel data, so that was private data, uh, but that email was forwarded by Mr. Scott to seventeen members of the public. A week later, not even a week later, um, I had sent an email to Ms. Brunksmeyer concerning some legal advice under the Fair Labor Standards Act arising out of employee, uh, issue and this administrator position. That email was forwarded to, uh, the council, uh, which was appropriate. And then Member Scott forwarded my email to his personal address and then on to members of the public. That's not a, uh, practices issue. That is a release of attorney-client privilege information. Um, and just so you're aware, the privilege belongs to the council as a whole, and only the council as a whole can waive the privilege. Uh, so that was, that was a violation of the attorney-client privilege by an individual council member. And then there was another email sent to the council, uh, by Ms. Brunksmeyer concerning another resume for the position for city administrator. Uh, again, that email was forwarded to, um, or Mr. Scott forwarded that email to his personal address and then on to seventeen members of the public. Uh, and again, that's private applicant data under thirteen point four-three. So there are one, two, three, four, five, six instances there, uh, where there's a problem with this practice of forwarding things to this group. Uh, five of them concerned, um, I should say five, not six. Four of them concerned, um, private personnel data, and one concerned, um, attorney-client privilege data. So that's, that's basically the, the result of that investigation, uh, in looking through those, um, hundreds of emails, um, were those, were those violations. And that was the, that was the conclusions of my report, which I sent to you in writing. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Um, I think then, Joe, are you gonna stay on, or?
It's entirely up to you folks.
Okay, um, so part of this for councils to consider. Um, censures are usually the public reprimands. Um, uh, many times when a council agrees to censure kind of their council member, um, they are barred from serving on committees. That's about the only thing that, um, a council can do. Um, so that will be my recommendation, at least from the Personnel or Finance Committee. Um, like I said, there were two aspects of this that I think are crucial. There's the legal aspect, and then the unethical aspect of it. Um, I did provide you guys in this packet the content of the forwards, and in the content of the forwards, it proves malicious intent. And these specific forwards are public data because they're forwarded to mi- members of the committee, of our committees, and those emails are actually public data. And with the malicious content in these emails, it shows that the way that a elected official speaks about other elected officials and our staff gives other people in their minds the right to do the same. And we have seen that in the last two years with the cyberbullying, with other things that have gone on. And from this, you can see that there is a stem here from, from the people this was forwarded to, to the how that was translated to the public. Um, there have been other council members in the state of Minnesota this year that have been censured for unethical behavior, um, towards staff and council members, and as you can see, we have emails calling members of council names, um, spreading things that aren't true, um, talking badly about our staff. Um, and I think as a council, we just cannot allow this, um, allow this type of behavior. Um, so I think, and I'm, I'm gonna be honest, I'm, I'm very, very upset because today at eleven was the only time that we could meet, our Councilman Scott could meet, and I had my eighteen-week emergency baby, or a high-risk baby scan that I had to reschedule now for three weeks later. And the fact that he was supposed to be here, he reassured us he would be here, and ten minutes before the meeting, we got an email saying he's not here. And I just, this is the kind of behavior that we've seen the last couple of years from him, and I think with us hiring a new city administrator, moving on with a new mayor, a new council, we need a reset, and we also need to let the public know that we, we are gonna rebuild the trust back on this council, and I think this is the first step to do that. So I am recommending that we do vote, um, for the censure and, and, and not allow Councilman Scott to serve on Personnel and Finance Committee due to the sensitive nature of the content.
I have some comments. Um, early on in our council career, Madam Mayor, you had mentioned to me in passing that yourself and Administrator Chansky, um, were thinking that Councilmember Scott was cutting and pasting emails and sending them to the public. So I was meeting with Administrator Chansky on another matter and asked him, well, what's your take on this? And what he basically stated was, any of the emails that we send out are public data. Um, you know, at that time, he didn't mention anything about privacy, but I think it's, you know, understood there are certain things that, you know, you can't send out, whether you're in the private sector or, and/or the public sector. So I believe that timeframe, and to the best of my recollection, was maybe April, May, twenty twenty-three. It was early on.
Okay.
So the concern I've had with, you know, the city government and how we handle things is, um, now, I had asked you about, you know, planning and zoning, that, okay, as a council committee member, I'm adding no value. Um, I don't see a reason to sit there for two and a half hours for cups and variances. But council, what you had just stated about one of the reasons you and David got rid of committees, that was never presented to council. And, you know, not having the Personnel and Finance Committee, I think, was a big mistake, hindsight being twenty twenty. But I think looking at some of these dates dating back to August of twenty twenty-three, this issue should have been dealt with. August twenty twenty-three, the council should have been, however it was handled, you know, handled, a meeting, a workshop, and also there was no training that if something like this was going on, it's no different than when you're looking to terminate an employee. You have to work with that employee, provide steps that are documented. This is what you need to do, and I think in this case, the city never did that.
Yep.
And.
And we didn't know. So here's the biggest thing, right? So David and I all thought this was unprecedented, even for Joe. Joe will tell you, this is unprecedented from legally. He's never seen this, this, in this manner. So when this was first brought to us, um, David and I, David was new in the role. I was new in my role. We didn't know how to necessarily handle it. We knew it wasn't illegal to forward, like, we knew that. But it was when this email was sent that we thought maybe this would be taken care of. So this was in August thirty-first, because then our IT person sent him an email letting him know, you can't do this, here are the resources. He followed up with a phone call, letting him know. So we, we, we don't have access to his emails, so we never knew to the extent of what was actually going on, right? We didn't. All we knew, though, is that David had seen email strings, and it created a lack of trust. And that's the part that is hard when you're looking at things like this, because if you have someone on council that you can't trust based on this type of information, it doesn't always just come out right away, and we didn't always know exactly what to, what to do about it. It wasn't until I saw that data breach a year later that I brought it to Joe, because I didn't know what to do. And as a new council member, especially a new mayor, the last thing you want to do is try to reprimand one of your other council members, because then it looks like a personal vendetta. It looks like, you know, there's all these things that factor into it, but it was the lack of trust, and it was talking to you about planning and zoning. It was a combination of, of all those things. But we thought potentially, now that he knew and had the resources back in August of twenty twenty-three, that it would stop, and actually it got worse. And quite honestly, the transparency of it, like, I understand the transparency of it. I came in with the same, you know, thinking, but the way you present data to the public matters. And when you're presenting data to the public and you're calling us names and you're making, insinuating things that aren't true, um, that is not the way you present data to the public. And even though it's not illegal, it is surely unethical. And that's where that part of it is, you know, where I struggle in this as well, um, because this is not just about it being illegal, it's about it being unethical.
Again, though, I think it should have been upon the city. I mean, here's the handout, Chapter twenty-six, Records Management. I mean, hindsight being twenty twenty, it's easy. I get it. But for the seriousness of it, and I don't condone a council member belittling or speaking badly about a fellow council member, you know, transparency to the public. We're elected to provide data to them. But again, to me, this is like the same situation where we brought in, you know, three new council members are brought into a termination hearing two weeks into our.
Yeah, I mean, I understand.
Ridiculous.
Yeah.
And I think the city had the responsibility to make sure, if it's just, it's not just one member, but we have the responsibility, okay, make sure every council member understands what you can do with public data and understand the rules and regulations, and sensitive data should not be forwarded. So, um, that, it just, that it, it went on so long ago concerns me that the council wasn't made aware, and there was no training or, or, or anything for the council so that everybody was on the same page. This is, here, here it is, black and white. This is what you can do with the data. This is what you can't do with the data, and that wasn't done.
And I agree with you. I mean, we've had this conversation, you know, we came into the termination. We didn't know what we were doing. I mean, we've, and that's, it's a learning process. Local government's not exactly the most efficient, and, and nowhere in government is our efficiency, um, especially with, you know, people coming in and out every two years. Um, I think, again, what bothers me is he was told, right? He was told over a year ago, very clearly in an email, very clearly on the phone. Um, again, he continued to do it, and the malicious intent of it is the part that, this, again, we wouldn't be sitting here if it was just forwarding, right? I, I don't know if that was, you know, it's the unethical aspect and the legal aspect, and I think it came to a head after, um, Chansky's departure due to the environment and Councilman Scott being a huge part of, of that. And I think that, again, the public was not made aware because we didn't have all the information. And it is hard to go to the public when you don't have all the information. I mean, this has been two and a half months that we've, since I've brought this to Joe, so nothing moves quickly either, um, but here we are. And I think that, um, again, I think that moving forward, then now anyone else coming in in the future needs to be made aware of what the rules are, um, but otherwise, this is where we sit.
Well, and this also brings to light, in my opinion, um, coming from the private sector, I had to go through hours of annual compliance and code of conduct training. Um, things like this, the city needs to have that training. The employee has to sign off on that training, whether it be staff and/or council members. And so people are aware, here's the rules. You need to follow them. And again, to my knowledge, I don't know if staff gets this training. I know council hasn't. We were handed a very thick book that looked, it was written by a lawyer and city ordinances. So again, without having that type of training, things like this can happen. Granted, this email might have been sent out, but also it's from an IT individual. It should have been from the administrator. Um, so, um, again, I think it was a lack, uh, the city has some responsibility for lack of training and documentation in things like this. Um, it's done all the time in the private sector. I don't know what the rules are for cities for this type of training, but I think going forward, it needs to be there.
And I think, again, going back to this, he was made aware that this was, he shouldn't be doing this, and he was given the resources. It, he was given the link to the League of Minnesota Cities Records Management Handbook that you have pulled up right there. In that email, he was given that link. He, again, followed up a phone conversation. Doesn't matter if it came from the administrator or the IT person. If I was made aware that this was not what I should be doing, I would stop, but he didn't stop, and it only got worse. Um, and that's where I struggle, but I a hundred percent agree with you because I didn't know either, and it wasn't talked about in our training.
Well, it gets back to the HR. Even having a personnel committee, I agree with it, but just because two people are appointed to a personnel committee, they're not HR experts. They're not trained. They don't have the ability. Hence why we asked for in the budget last year, and it's put in again this year, that there is budget for human resources, and I hope the council provides direction to look at what's out there as a consulting service for issues like this. Again, HR would have been very helpful in a situation like this.
I agree.
Um, so.
Yeah, I've, I've got some comments for me. Um, you know, as, as Mr. Scott, I think, has ran and has indicated to Mr. Lingle, uh, it's in their memo that, you know, Mr. Scott ran on transparency. Uh, we've heard that forwarding emails is not illegal. Um, that is, that's, that's a privilege, right? It's a, it's a right. Um, any of the information that, uh, majority of the information shared is, is open data, uh, practice. Um, some of the comments made in some of these emails, it goes back to, I forget the gentleman's name that came and visited us with, but goes back to disagree well. Um, you know, it's not personal. Don't take personal tax. Don't be personally vindetti. Don't be, you know, making personal remarks. Um, he didn't do that, or he, he did make some of those comments. Um, what, what really, the most thing that bothers me the most is when there are specific items that was said, do not, uh, um, this is not for public dissemination. Uh, that concerns me that that was, um, just bypassed, and then also the one that was a client attorney privilege. Um, while some of those could be training issues about the other items, those are two things that stand out to me that are the most affecting, is when it clearly states. Um, so whether or not he didn't read, didn't understand, I hope it's just didn't read, um, and continued to forward them on, um, that's where my biggest concern is. Right now, so, uh, an item in front of us is the potential of the censure. Um, as you indicated, is for committees. At this time, we don't have committees. I know we've all received a, um, memo from our mayor-elect Rogencamp.
It's not for committees. A censure committee voted on by council.
No, but, but the restriction is to remove from committees.
Oh, I'm, okay.
Yep, my apologies for not.
To not sit on committees.
To not sit on committees.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood what you said.
Um, as of today, we don't have those committees, um, but we have received the memo from, uh, Mayor-elect Rogencamp that committees are a topic of discussion come January. Um, I think, you know, and as, as a council, the mayor, uh, usually assigns who sits on those committees, and I think it's up for discussion about who sits where with whom. And, um, at this time, I, I'm not really leaning towards a censure. One, we don't have the committees to really place on that, and come, come January, it could be a whole different situation. Um, but I think just a simple, um, letter of apology to staff and us council members of, of acknowledging this and changing the behavior of making sure to review. Again, forwarding emails of what can be public nature, that's all of our prerogative to do. Um, but, you know, we really have to be conscientious of what we receive and how it's disseminated to public if we are choosing to forward it.
What if he, I mean, so him, he was supposed to be here today, which, so what if he says no? What if he says, no, I'm not writing a letter of apology, right? And that's where I, then what, right? We can't force him.
Then at this point, then I'd probably, uh, table the potential of the censure, um, until a letter of apology is.
And with the censure, we don't have to include the committee assignments. We can just vote to censure him. It's just literally a public reprimand.
At, at this point, I, I think a letter of apology, in my opinion, is fine at this point. As Mr., uh, Jensen alluded, um, we're in the state of, you know, HR policies and, and trainings, and so that, that's kind of where I'm sitting right now.
Okay, well, if he's willing to do that, I'm totally fine with that.
Yeah, I'm comfortable, um, if there's some sort of acknowledgement that there was sort of wrongdoing, um, especially to the staff, I think, um, some of those issues, you know, obviously the personal ones that were forwarded, um, that is concerning to me as well, um, especially if it continues. Um, and at this point, you know, although he has apologized, indicated it wasn't his intention to do so, um, we do not know if, if those activities will in fact continue in the future. So, um, that would be sort of my concern, um, as well. Um, it, I agree, it's hard to censure him when he wasn't sort of told this more, in a more formal manner, um, and then later continued to do so when we followed up with another investigation. So, you know, that would be another way to, like, check and make sure that these things were not being done would be to, like, do another, um, evaluation after some time to see if these activities continued.
I, I do struggle with the fact of the malice intent against our staff in his emails, against residents, and against our council. Um, when a resident would send an email to Administrator Chansky, he would forward that to members of the public, and he would make fun of them in that email. Um, and so this is a trust issue for me. I, I think, I think the residents deserve to know that, and again, it's not illegal. Like, it's, it is public data, but it is something that I struggle with because, you know, we have staff that are sending emails to council, and if staff can't trust someone on. someone on council to not, you know, in a vindictive way, share data. Again, it's one thing to forward. It's another thing to forward and make fun of, forward and name call, forward and make accusations that aren't true. And that is, that is where I struggle the most with this because that is something you learn as a child not to do to people. You don't need to be taught to not name call, to not try to hurt people, to not try to spread lies and rumors. And that is the part that I struggle with. There is no training for that. You learn that as a child. And the fact that, it is sad that the public won't ever actually see to the full extent of the harm that he's done the last two years on our staff and our council, on our residents. It is. And I, that was one of the reasons I did not want to run again. Cause I did not feel that this was something that I wanted in my kid's life, in my life right now, especially having young kids. My daughter attended one of our council meetings at one point, saw the way he spoke to me. Again, this has been two years of behavior that is not taught, that should not be taught by the city. So I'm fine with a public apology. Honestly, I just want it to stop. I think that our new city administrator coming in deserves to come in and be able to trust his council. You all deserve to be able to trust one another and to get stuff done for the city of Breezy Point. And again, it is unfortunate that he decided he just didn't want to come today when we know that we've all rearranged our schedules for the last two years to make sure he could come to our meetings. And he does not come to our meetings. And it's just, it doesn't feel like he wants to be here. And again, I wish I would have addressed it sooner, I mean, Councilman Johnson, like I, I do, but I don't think at that point I knew how to.
Well, that's to my point. We weren't given the tools how to. I'm not in favor
Some of this is not, you don't need to know this. I mean, he is in a professional career. He probably has his training every year.
He's in HR.
But
So, so I, I get, I understand that he should be told by the city. Can I finish? I understand that he should be told formally by the city, but also some of us just know these things. You know, it's not
I don't disagree.
It doesn't take a lot to know, like I shouldn't forward something and say like, oh, these staff members have COVID and then send it to all my friends. Like where, where, in what, I don't
And you, you mean, you saw this, right?
No, I it just needs to be documented and everybody's given the same training is all I'm saying. Yes, common sense
This is where I struggle with this. This is why Administrator Chansky, part of the reason he resigned in the way that he did. And it was never, and Administrator Chansky deserves to have something else come out besides just the resignation that he had. Because him applying for other jobs, he does not get to share exactly what happened. And it is unfortunate because there's speculation always when someone leaves a position in that abrupt of a nature. And he deserved, I mean, there's an aspect of it that he deserves backup in what he said because he didn't get any backup. He deserves that. And this is part of that, why I wanted this to come out, because it was very unfair. We lost two city administrators because of the same thing. And he was a part of that and it was never public and it was unfair and the residents deserve to know that. So like I said, I am just happy that after two years, some of this stuff is actually on the table for residents, the transparency is there, which is what he wants. So here it is. And I'm fine with a formal public apology. I hope he does it. I hope he takes it seriously. And I really, really hope that you guys don't have to deal with this moving forward and you guys can have a great start to the new year and just get stuff done for the city. That is my hope for the city. And I hope that this can be put behind us, but he does need to come to the table and acknowledge that this is what he's done. And that he is genuinely sorry for these things because he should be. He should be sorry for that, for that comment. He should be sorry. You don't say things like that. Especially to you, you've served the city for eight, eight years now. Well, amazingly, you don't deserve that. We're not going to be public.
Yeah, it is, it is hard. I mean, it is hard to read responses like that, but everybody is entitled to their opinion. However, there may be. And again, I'll, I'll go and, you know, close this out and, and stating that a public apology would be an apology to staff members, fellow council members, and, and those who have been potentially negatively affected, such as the personnel information that was forwarded, I think is warranted. And again, it goes back to our code of ethics and, and the potential training, but
We did that together too, right? We sat here as a council and we put together our behavior policy together. And we all agreed that we were not going to do this to one another. So clearly, Councilman Johnson, us going through training and doing things together cleared that didn't mean anything for him because he went on to do this. Yes, unfortunately. So is that a formal motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll make that motion to request a formal letter of apology to staff, council and public.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. All right, so do I have, anyone else have anything else to add before we
We can't add anything to a special meeting.
No, I meant just anything else to say.
Apologies.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned.
Thank you, Joel.
He gone.